Sounds good. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to our special standards and assessment meeting. We may tonight have the highest viewer ratings of the season. I think this is a special meeting and it's, it's really exciting to see so much interest in education in Utah. And I urge all those who are participating on this particular issue than not just be one issue participants, but to continue to be involved and subscribe to the USB channel on YouTube and volunteer at your local school. I think the more of us that are involved in, in helping our kids, the better here in Utah. Um, we thank the governor for his vote of support for us in these issues. We recognize the, the substantial nudge that we got from the legislature to take some action here. Um, and although, um, we are on a tight timeline, we've certainly done our best to receive input from education stakeholders, from parents, and to reflect those in the, the materials that have been prepared for tonight. Um, I just wanted to say at the onset that we, uh, this is a work that's been ongoing, uh, for quite some time with the board. Um, we started with the portrait of a graduate, um, and that's been, uh, over a year ago, two years ago. Um, we defined educational equity as a board and had a unanimous vote on that. We passed a resolution, uh, which addressed, um, the issues of equity and racism. And all of that, building on all of those things now tonight, we have this R two, seven, seven, three, twenty-eight rule, uh, before us. So without further ado, I think we'll go ahead and get started in your backup. We have several drafts that have been prepared. And I would like to begin with the most recent draft, which is draft four. So that's the most recent one that came out and reflects a lot of stakeholder input. So if we could get that up on the screen in front of us. And I believe, um, what we'll do, are there any help? I've got a hand up from committee member Bell nap. Laura, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say too, that we've appreciated all the people's comments that they wrote in for this committee as well. Since we weren't taking verbal comments tonight, but I would like to start out with making a motion to get things moving that we, um, um, I'd like to make a motion that we move draft for, forward to the, the, to the full board on first reading and look for their approval on second reading.
So we do have a motion before the committee that we move, um, draft for, we adopt draft for and move it on to the board. Um, so adopted on first reading, move it on to the board on a second and final reading. Um, and with that motion, uh, before us, we'll, uh, look for committee members to speak to the motion. Looks like we have, um, Laura, would you like to speak to your motion first? And then we have Jenny Earl on deck?
I would. I think with, uh, the hours that we have spent on this, that this is I so appreciate the time spent to bring draft four forward about security and support for families and kids and parents, and also to be conscious unaware of teachers and their drive and their importance in a classroom. And so that's why I like moved, um, a draft forward. Um, thank you. That's
Okay, thank you, Laura. Um, Jenny, comments to the motion?
Yes, I'm wondering if we could proceed similar to what we did with the bylaws and move kind of section by section and work through it that way? Would that be okay? Or do specific motions brought forward?
I think that we, we have, we have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, we have a motion before us now, and I think that we can proceed if you have amendments to the motion. We can proceed section by section there, but, um,
Okay, let me
We'll have to speak to the motion now in committee.
Okay, I would like to make a motion or an amendment to the motion.
Okay, which, which area are we looking at?
The area one, that the top three, two, eight, one. And I think Jeff has this. This is actually motion seven for me, but it, it's just to include the, um, and I don't know if Jeff, do you have that up? Uh, D, so it would be an addition of D. And so it's, it's right there. I can read it out. Um, my amendment would be to add section fifty-three E dash three dash five oh two dash eight, which requests that the board help uh, school districts develop and implement guideline strategies and professional development programs for administrators and teacher consistent with subsection that list off two sections there and focused on improving interaction with parents and promoting greater parental involvement in the public schools. And I can just a minute to look up both those sections if you'd like, so that, um, those have to do with educator professional development. So would you like to
Yeah, let's, um, take a minute and let's see if, um, I, I don't know who's got the controls tonight. Is that you, Jeff? Are you?
It is indeed.
Okay, if you could get those two sections here so we can access those. And we'll be pulling those up on our own computer. So let's just take one minute and get those sections of Utah code up.
Point of order?
Yes.
I, I guess I'm not quite certain. Uh, board member Earl, did you send these out previously for us to review instead of all of a sudden it's right there in front of me? And I'm trying to make a judgment right now. That's a question.
No, I did not. I, I finished them up this afternoon, looking through the board rule. Remember we got draft for last night? So I went back down through, and so these are my recommendations. Would you like me to forward on my list to you currently?
Well, that's going to be hard to toggle back and forth, but thank you. I, 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 I'm fine then, but
Chair Hanson, I have another point of order.
Um, okay, we'll take another point
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get clarity as to, um, if we in our rules put in statute and put in code. Jeff would have to answer that.
Yeah, I, I think Jeff can answer that, but we do in cases, um, in, in situations, reference code sections in our rules.
Where you're looking at it on, yeah, anyways, go ahead.
So please go ahead, Jeff, and answer that question, then we'll get back to the
Sure. So the edit that's being proposed here, it, you'll see in section one of the rule, the authority and purpose section of the rule. This is known as the preamble of the rule. The preamble is not a legally binding section of the rule when it comes to interpretation of the rule. But we do include in this section, all the different pieces of authority that give the board the right to write the rule. So the motion before you is to add an additional section uh, of code and that section of code in fifty-three E dash three dash five oh two, which is on the screen to the left side and highlighted in gray. Um, is a section of code that states a requirement of law that the board is required to help school districts develop and implement and so on, as the, as the, uh, code states. So it would not be inappropriate to cite that as another source of authority for what you were accomplishing within the rule.
Thank, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, um, and appreciate that, uh, Jeff. I mean, and maybe, um, with that being said, we can move to the next, um, section of code that, um, board member Earl has referenced. Maybe you can give that to us again, Jenny. I'm sorry, I'm
Well, it's simply, it, it, yeah, it, it's simply contained in the law here and, and just so that you're aware what that is because it is contained within that piece. I didn't include those. I just am referencing that part of the law.
Chair, I can add context to that.
Yeah, if you could, please.
So the section of code being proposed to add for a citing of authority states that this, the board has a responsibility, legal responsibility via the legislature passing the law to help school districts develop and implement guidelines, strategies and professional development programs for administrators and teachers consistent with two sections of law focused on improving interaction with parents and promoting greater parental involvement in public schools. So there's two sections of law. Um, one is the characteristics of the public education system. Uh, and you have subsection seven here that talks about retaining excellent teachers, more related to professional development. Um, collaborating with higher ed and whatnot to make sure there is adequate training for teachers to have the skills to be excellent at their and the other section of code fifty-three E six, this is legislative findings on teacher quality. So this is kind of a, a purpose statement, I believe. Is section in B. So the legislature is making a statement here that it finds that teacher quality is important. And there's also an element of providing safe and effective performance and functioning education to the children. Again, all of this going leaning toward reasons why we have professional learning. So just two areas of code that highlight the characteristics of public education that the legislature believes to be important.
Okay. Um, board member Earl, would you like to speak then to that with that explanation?
Yeah, I just felt like, um, under this particular area, that this was what we were intending to do and that this particular citing of the law, which falls under our responsibility, just articulates that. Um, and so also creating that element of authority in this authority and purpose underneath here. In addition to what we have, it doesn't take, I don't think it detracts from that. It merely just supports it. So those are my thoughts on that.
Okay, anyone else like to speak to the motion? We have, uh, board member straight.
Yes, thank you, Chair Hanson. So in regards to this, whether we put these nine items in or not, it doesn't change anything. It's already in the law. It's already in, it's just backup or, or to, to what's being proposed in this new rule. Is that correct?
Um, I think we can direct that, um, Jenny, um, please go ahead and answer, and then I think, uh, we'll ask Jeff Holton also to
Yeah, well, one of them, we're focusing on standards. This talks about, um, the professional development. Um, element to it, and it doesn't, it's not citing all nine of these things. It, it would be listing at the eight here. Um, just that the one area there. So
Okay, Jeff, could you comment to board member straight's question, please?
Absolutely. Um, so the proposal would be kind of adding a D, uh, right here below line ten in the rule and would only be subsection eight from the law. So only the section I have highlighted here would be the additional authority. You are correct. The law is the law, whether you read, if you cite to it or restate it. We never restate law in rules per se. Um, but we always cite to authority sections, uh, within this part of the rule, just to, um, provide context as to why and the authority that the board has to write the administrative rules. So there'd be nothing changed or different about the rule by adding this in.
Okay, any other comments? I still got two hands up with board member straight and board member Earl. Um, did you want to further comment on this?
Yes, so, uh, I'm not against any of these things. They're already there. I think we're very focused in and honed in at this moment on some very specific things regarding this topic that I think are important and I, you know, just because a student writes a whole bunch of words, doesn't mean they said anything more. So I'm of the opinion that, that we don't need this item, and it's not because I disagree.
Okay, thank you, um, board member Cannon.
Um, I'd just like to, uh, Jeff Ben Holton to perhaps comment on, uh, was there discussion about including this particular section or was there, uh, thought that it was sufficiently covered, uh, when creating the rule? Was there a reason this wasn't included or is, is, uh, their reason it should be included now? If you might just give us an opinion on that, please?
Please, um, Jeff?
Thank you, uh, board member Cannon. So typically, uh, the, the section, we usually cite to the specific code that states that the board needs to be writing rule about something. Um, so we have done that in section B. Um, we cite, there is a general section of code, uh, that allows the board, you want, you're really the only state agency that I have ever encountered that has this wide range of board writing authority. But there is that piece of code in section B that basically states anything you need to do as a board to govern public education, you can write a rule about it via that, uh, the authority in that section. So originally that was the only section cited. It would really be the only one you need. There is nothing wrong with adding these additional sections in. Um, I added in section C after consulting with our attorney generals. Uh, Michelle Buse had made a comment that because we're talking about standards, um, we could remind people we have the authority to do this already. Um, so there is nothing wrong with adding this in and reminding others that we do have the authority to put general guidelines out for professional development. I, I think it does provide good context, um, for the authority that you have and reminding people of what your role is uh, in this rule in particular. So I think it's a fine addition. I don't see any issues with it.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, one more hand up, it looks like board member straight.
Yes, I, I don't agree with that, disagree with that last comment. Uh, I just, um, in this, this situation where we're hashing this out, we've had four drafts, we've had opportunity to comment and we've built this, we're now in front of the public, that it's been disclosed, we've done lots of work, not just in the last weeks, but in the last couple of years in regards to this. And in specific to this item, all, all of a sudden we get these at the very last second. And I guess that's my, my real concern and, uh, you know, we have public comment, but a public comment comes in five minutes before we start this meeting. I'm not going to be able to look at it. And even if it comes in at four forty-six, which I had lots, I have public comment come in at four forty-six from someone that wants to have some, some input in, in this that's in the legislature. And that's the first time I see it. So I guess I'm a little gun shy. I'm not against it. If it ended up in there, I, I'm fine with it. But I just don't like the, the precedent of how we do business if we, if we're constantly, and I know we're in the debate of it, but I haven't had a chance to look at this.
Okay, thank you. Jenny, do you have something new to add to the conversation?
Well, I just wanted maybe a clarification. I mean, we're here to make changes, right? Or we just accept this at face value. I, I feel like I sent on a number of comments over the last several days. Some of those were not incorporated into draft four. And so, um, this is the public vetting of that. So I, I don't think we discredit one another for providing additional reference. Part of the reason for doing this is there was some questionability as to where, whether this, um, we should be involved in this rule. And I, I think this just provides clarification. It was not intended to, um, throw anyone off on the board. This is still part of that process. And you're right, we've been vetting it, but to continue to vet it is not out of line of what we should be doing as board members. And so, um, anyways, those are, those are my thoughts. We can, we can take a vote on this. I just feel like it provided additional clarity to what we're doing and to what our role is.
Thank you. Um, we have, um, I think as has been said, there's been a lot of comment that's come in. Not all comment was adopted or, um, incorporated into the, um, drafts that we have before us. Um, this is a place for us to move forward and revise. Um, hopefully we can be efficient in doing that, but certainly, um, we need to have conversations and then, um, um, after we've been able to express our opinions, move ahead and have a vote. And I think it's time for us to do that now on, on this particular item. So board members, we have a motion before us to amend the draft for that's before us to include a section D in article one. So this is three twenty-eight dash one would include a section D, which would read um, section five, section fifty-three E dash three dash five oh two B, which requests the board help school districts develop and implement guideline strategies and professional development programs for administrators and teachers consistent with subsections fifty-three E two dash three oh two seven and fifty-three E dash six, dash one oh three, two A and B focused on improving interaction with parents and promoting greater parental involvement in the public schools. Um, board members, if you could go ahead and please vote. We'll try to do this, um, online and see how that works. Are you able to track those? Nora Lee, it looks like I've got, um, the nays, um, board member straight, you know, disappearing. I think we had three nays. Board member, um, Bell nap, board member straight. Oh, hang on, can everyone get that up again? They're disappearing too fast unless you can see those, Nora Lee.
Chair, I don't see those. So if they can do that again.
Yeah, let's do that one one more time. So we have two noes, three yeses, that motion would pass. Um, I have board member straight and board member Bell nap as noes on that one. Is that how you see it, Nora Lee?
They're not coming through for me, Chair. Sorry.
Okay, that's, um, yeah.
That's what I saw, Chair Hanson.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. They are just flipping up and then going away quickly. So we will, if it's not working after the next couple of votes, we'll go to a voice vote. Okay, let's, um, so that, um, amendment then passes, and now we're moving ahead with the amended motion. Uh, do we have any more comment or discussion to the amended motion? Okay, it looks like I've got, uh, Laura with your hand up?
Uh, yes, Chair, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
Um, it's actually, I think, I think it's on line eighty-four, it might be eighty-five, and it has the word only. And I would like to take the word only out, please.
Okay, let's look at line eighty-five. And we'll, we'll take this one, um, as it is, and we'll, we'll do that with you, whatever is convenient. But if we can move through the rule from top to bottom, I think for the next ones, it may be, um,
Okay, great. I'm, I'm great. When we get there, let's work on that. I can wait.
We can go ahead right now, Laura. You've got it on the table. We've made the motion. Let's, let's look at this. That's okay. Um, so we're on line eighty-five.
I, I can't remember if it's eighty-four, eighty-five. I'm sorry, I, I don't have
That's fine. I know that you're driving, so, um, and I'm looking for the word only here. Give us the section, Laura, because I don't
Okay, Chair, why don't we come back and all, I'll come back and, and have it more prepared, okay?
Okay, no problem. It's just doesn't appear to be on that line that you're citing, so we'll, we'll find it.
Thank you. Thank you.
No problems. Okay, um, we've got, uh, another hand up from board member Earl. Please go ahead.
I, I'm wondering if someone could clarify on number four, why we added? Um, and I can give a little bit of reason why I'm asking this question, but, uh, sorry, let me get to the lines. On line twenty-six through twenty-nine, why we added inclusion in here? And this is my, this is my question behind that. Our our laws, this isn't replacing current law. Is that accurate to say? In other words, it's not replacing our special education law. It doesn't replace our English learner, um, rules or law. It doesn't replace um, our other rules and laws that are in place. Is that an accurate statement? Is that
That is, that is true.
Okay.
Of course, law takes precedence to rule. Um, and, uh, that would not replace any of the rules that are currently in place. I can give you a little bit of, um,
Sure.
Discussion on this. We are talking about equity here. And, uh, if you look at the other equity work we've done, we have, um, specifically brought in, um, ability. Um, dealing with inclusion of, of children with disabilities. Um, and also with, uh, extraordinary abilities or, you know, so ability is, is one function or one portion of, of the equity piece. We had a lot of public comment um, saying that we hadn't specifically, um, included that in the rule that we're putting together, which is titled, you know, professional learning on equity. Um, and thought it was appropriate to include this and then a companion piece down below that talks about inclusive classrooms. Um, so that's why it was added is because we had uh, abilities spelled out, and I think it could be read into the rule as it was, as it was written before. Um, so the children with disabilities would have been included in many of the sections that are there. But this is a specific call out to, uh, recognize, uh, those, those kids as we talk about equity. Is there anything that needs to be added to that staff? Did I capture that? Okay, Patty or Jeff?
Yes, this is, uh, Deputy Superintendent Patty Norman in, agreed. It was that equity means more, um, than race. It's much more inclusive of that, not.
Okay.
I would agree with that. I was just wondering why we, I, I mean, I guess we could start adding more vocabulary, right? For different groups. That's why I was curious why that was. Um, I do have a question where A came from, if that is coming from law. Um, because I, I have an amendment to that. I just, I have a question or a concern with the word or the idea of belonging. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering if someone could just kind of give me maybe some reference to why that word is there. Um, and if, is, do, I, I guess I'm, maybe my direction or my thought is, and maybe I'm misunderstanding in some way, and if so, maybe there needs to be clarified language, but belonging, that students belonging to school, belonging to home. Who do students belong to is the, I guess that's the question in my mind. I think I understand the premise that there's a safety and security in the settings they're in. But I guess I'm, I'm wondering about the word belonging specifically, if this is reference from law or where that came from. And then I have a possible motion, um, to amend that, but I'm just wondering if someone could give a framework.
Okay, um, I believe that, um, we could probably ask, um, Leah Voorhees to chime in on that. She's, um, dealing specifically with the, um, disabilities and that sort of thing. Are you, are you here tonight, Leah?
I am, Chair. Would you like me to respond?
Please.
So belonging, um, for students with disabilities is, is being part of the community that, that they aren't separate from the school community, but um, students with disabilities are first general education students. And, and belonging to the community is, um, for students with disabilities, the idea that, that they are first general education students and have the same opportunities, rights, privileges and protections as well as rules as general education students.
Thank you, um, Leah. Um, and if you look, this inclusion has been separated out into two portions, which A would apply to all students. And then B is referencing specifically students with disabilities. So I've got a couple more hands up, Jenny, that maybe we, can we hear from them before you make your motion? Um, let's hear from Laura and then from Brent. Nope.
Sorry, I did take my hand down, sorry.
Yeah, okay, we'll go, we'll go to Brent then.
So when I think of the word belonging, uh, especially in the context of this sentence, I hearken back to, uh, Brown versus Board of Education. When, prior to that, and Plessy versus Ferguson, the Supreme Court said that you can segregate as long as it's equal. Well, in Brown versus Board of Education, based on several scientific studies as well as the use of dolls, uh, you could look up that study. I'm not going to elaborate on that. But, uh, in Brown versus Board of Education, the Supreme Court ruled that separate is never equal. And so when I think of the word belonging, I think of that idea of separate is never equal. Now, uh, even if you're in the same building, we want to create a sense of belonging for all individuals, regardless of any factor, regardless of disability, race, religion, whatever it may be. We want a sense of belonging for all students, and so separate is never equal. Belonging is equality.
Thank you, board member straight. Okay, back to you, board member Earl.
Yeah, I think Jeff, um, I'm going to change Yeah, I think Jeff, I'm going to change that from my original wording. So can I give you? A different wording on that? That be all right? I, I appreciate Leah's. Her insights on that because that helps for clarification. It would be number, yep, I, yeah, I would like in place of, hold on, let me look at the wording again. And, and so students feel a sense of being part of the education community. And support. That would be my recommended motion, so.
Okay, we have a motion.
It feels like that's where we're going with that, so.
Have a motion then before the committee. To amend.
And then to.
Line thirty-one.
And strike belonging.
Does that read correctly?
Let's see, sense of being part of the education community and, yeah.
Okay, so inclusion means the practice of ensuring students feel a sense of being part of the education community and supported. Think grammatically, does that sound okay?
I. It feels like it needs something just a little bit.
Any, any other comments to this motion? Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Okay, we will go ahead and vote then. Please vote. And. Let's see. Brent, I don't see your vote. Okay, and Laura, so it looks like. We have Board Member Earl in favor and. Or remember the other board, the other committee members opposed to that one, so that motion will not pass. Okay, let's move things forward then. Do we have another area that we need to look at? And again, I won't hold you to it exactly, but if we can kind of go top to bottom, I think it will help us to be a little bit organized in our thoughts, so. Board Member Earl.
Yes, uh, on line. Forty-four. Just adding line forty-four acknowledging individual. Differences. Just the addition of individual on that particular.
Okay, um, so we have a, a motion before the committee to amend line forty-nine. As we see it now, a draft for to add the word individual to subsection D. Um, and I would like to ask Jeff if he could help us with where that. Kind of given us, give us the genealogy of that. Section, did that, was that taken from another document, Jeff, or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
This was, uh, this is a definition of respect in Portrait of a Graduate.
Okay. So as, as stated, D was, was pulled from Portrait of a Graduate.
Correct.
Um, any other discussion to this motion?
Can I provide? Okay, go ahead, Brent.
Your, we'll hear from Brent and then we'll hear from Jenny. And as long as you want to hold your hands up, I won't cut us off until we, unless things really start dragging on, so we can talk about these things. Go ahead, Brent.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just have a question. If some, if, as we look at the, where this came from, from Portrait of a Graduate. Does that mean that if we pass this, that it changes Portrait of a Graduate, or do we have to address that separately? Anyway, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I, I think that I could probably field that question. I. I think that we could make the change to this language. We've adopted Portrait of a Graduate above. And then we pulled out specific sections of Portrait of a Graduate down below. So it would maybe create a little bit of a. Difference, a mismatch between those two, but I don't know that it would mean we have to go back and revise Portrait of a Graduate. Am I misspeaking, staff? Is there anyone?
Um, I can. Answer that. I don't know if the rest of staff will agree with me, so anyone who disagrees with me, please chime in. You are correct. I do not think that there would have to be an updating of either. I would point out up here on lines forty-one to forty-three. The professional learning would be in alignment with the resolution. Portrait of a Graduate and the professional learning standards. So. I would say the only thing to be mindful of is if it changes substantially the meaning either way. Or if it's just providing clarity, you probably wouldn't want language that contradicts. So I would be mindful of that, but if it's clarifying what we probably are already doing, I don't see that it would be a big issue.
Chair Hanson, may I ask a Board Member Earl a question?
Yeah, you're, you've got your hand up and I think I called on you, so you're free to do that. Go ahead.
So, uh, will you please, Board Member Earl, explain? Your philosophy, your, your idea of the importance of putting the word individual. Here.
Um, I think it provides greater clarity to what this particular item is. Um, and the reason why is because it seems to me that we are trying to. Focus on the needs of individual students. That's what we're, we're focusing on. And so as we're looking at individual differences here. I think it provides greater clarity as we're, as we're relating to one another. It's not intended to be some broad usage or whatever, but I think it does. Focus more on the individual and that is, that is the intent. Is, is that it wasn't to even go back and try to tidy up language anywhere else. And I feel like we can. We can add further clarity here without reworking every document we, we have, because this isn't those other documents. This is a, this is a, a usage. For people going forward. I don't know. Did that provide some clarity for you?
I guess I just still. I'm still, why? I, I think, I'm not cer, I still don't see it. What difference?
Just acknowledging differences is one thing, but recognizing the worth of individuals and their uniqueness. Is very, I think it, it provides a, a clear reference.
Okay, um, we're going to go to Board Member Bellnap, I think. Oh, Jenny, you've got your hand up. Go ahead and then we'll go to Board Member Bellnap and then. We'll move from there. Go ahead. So Board Member Earl.
Sorry, go, go ahead. I was just waiting to.
Oh, okay, Board Member Bellnap, please.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate this conversation, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out how individual, if we're changing. The meaning of this sentence by adding individual. Acknowledging differences by looking for the good in everyone. Including oneself and showing the regard, feelings, rights and cultural and, and traditions. And so I can't figure out why adding individual changes the concept that's already here.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment to this before we take a vote? I will just add a brief comment that although I don't disagree with individual, I don't know that it adds much or. I don't agree, I don't disagree with the sentiment of adding individual. I do feel like consistency is important and Portrait of a Graduate has been before the board. And been rolled out to many places and really been something that we've lived and breathed for the last couple of years. Um, and I'd like to stay consistent with that. Also, I believe that looking for the good in everyone, including oneself, that for me captures that individuality that we're looking for. But any other comments? Laura, you still have your hand up? No, I guess not. Looks like we're ready to take a vote on this one then. So. The motion before the committee is to amend draft four by adding. To line forty-nine, as on our screen, the word individual, so that D would read acknowledging individual differences. By looking for the good in everyone, including oneself and showing due regard for feelings, rights, cultures and traditions. Uh, committee members, please vote. And Jenny, I assume you're a yes, so we've got. Or our committee member Earl voting yes and other committee members voting no, that motion would not pass. And we will move forward. Member Earl, please.
Yes, I have a motion online. Let me just one second, let me look down here. My notes, on line forty-seven. So we read collaborating with diverse community members to understand, recognize and appreciate. What we all have in common as human beings. And then I have, and, uh, sorry. And Americans, that's what I have. Including acknowledging and then the rest of that diverse cultures, languages, traditions, values, needs and lived experiences. And I would be happy to speak to that.
Yes, please. Discussion to the motion from you, Jenny.
Yes, I feel like, um, while acknowledging the differences. Is important, we also need to have an element of acknowledging where we have things in common as well. And even the common historical heritage that we have. And so that's the reason why including those items in there so that we can, we're still acknowledging those differences, but we're also. Looking for and recognizing those elements that we have in common with one another.
Okay, any further discussion? To the motion? Don't see any hands. So we can go ahead and, and vote on this one? Um, oh, I did one thing, I guess Jeff prepared a document on this. Um, to try to show kind of where these phrases come, came from. So could you just remind us, Jeff, on where this language? Came from in, in drafting the, in putting the draft of the rule together. Um, one of the things that I asked staff to do, and I think they've done a good job of that, is to take language that we had already been before the board. Um, and had already received a positive vote from the board and been adopted. And so I just, not necessarily speaking against any of the language that's up here, but I'd just like to remind everyone where this came from, so that we understand the context there. Please, Jeff.
I forgot, I never introduced myself, so I apologize to anyone out in public, who's this random person? I'm Jeff Enhold, Director of Public Affairs for the State Board of Education. D and E both came from Portrait of a Graduate's Respect section, so D was the definition and then E you will recognize as. They have the different grade bands of outcomes or competencies you would like to see in a, a Portrait of a Graduate, and this came from. A combination of several of those great bands.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further comment on this?
So just a clarification, can I ask a clarifying?
Sure.
But, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jenny, you're.
Is this, uh, this is a not exact wording, this is compilation then, is what you're, what you're saying, Jeff, from several areas?
Correct, it is a, there's no additional language added, but it is kind of two. Glued together, if you will, from two different parts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Board Member Bellnap, then Board Member Straight.
Thank you, Chair. I actually can really appreciate the part of, of. Recognize and appreciate what we all have in common as human beings. And then the diverse cultures. I can't get my head around on the American part and not that I'm not an American, but. Some of our students are not. And so I, I can't get my head around that part.
Thank you, Board Member Straight.
Yeah, I, I agree with Board Member Bellnap and, uh, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. But I just want to recognize continually, you know, one of the first things I, I recognized once I was elected to the board. As I dug into the strategic plan and Portrait of a Graduate and. And personalized competency-based learning. How much work and great work had been done by the board? And when, when we started working on very early, all of our first meeting in January, when we were working on. This very issue, we're working on defining equity and we, on my very first board meeting, we passed the resolution. On racism. And, uh, you know, it, it just amazed me, the foundation of work. And so that's, I've just been a proponent of. Of our strategic plan and our Portrait of a Graduate and, and the things that have, that have been done. But yeah, I can. Do we, how do we, how would we do this, an amendment to amendment to accept? That first part, what we all have in common as human beings.
Maybe humans.
I don't know if you heard that from Laura. She's asking, I guess, for a friendly amendment to the amendment to the amendment to have that just be humans.
I'll pass on that. I'll let. Board Member Bellnap address that.
You, you have it, you have it. Um, I do like, I do like that idea of what, what we all have in common is humans. And diverse cultures, languages, da, 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 da. I have to have an and there too, Jeff, in there somewhere. Brent, is that hitting what you thought?
Oh, Brent, you're muted.
That's fine. I come from Sand Peak County and sometimes I, I don't know the language very well, but, well, that sounds good to me.
I don't think it needs an and though. Is that accurate? What we all have in common is humans, including acknowledging difference.
No, we don't. No, perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
So that would be an amendment to the amendment, please.
So, so we have an amendment to the amendment before the committee. And if there's no, Brent, you've still got your hand up. Do you want to comment further on this? Okay. If there's no further comment, the amendment to the amendment is that we would adopt on line fifty-two. It would read appreciate what we all have in common as humans. Including, and then fifty-three, including acknowledging diverse cultures, languages, traditions, values, needs and lived experiences. So we'll vote now on the amendment to the amendment. Please. Go ahead.
Point of order, Chair. I think it needs a comma. Maybe not an and. Jeff?
Yeah, okay. With the comma then, we'll vote on the amendment to the amendment with the comma as shown on your screens. Please go ahead and vote. Okay. And I've got one more here. Let's see, Janet, can you just pop your vote up one more time?
Uh, when I do it, my, my vote just goes up and stays up. I'm an I.
Okay, yeah, it's just not showing up on my screen. I don't know. Nora Lee, are you doing any better at seeing these?
Chair, I'm seeing Cannon and Bellnap, that's it.
Okay, well, um, from what I've seen on the screen here, it looks like we're unanimous on this one.
That's what I saw, Chair.
Anyone who's a nay? Okay, we'll go ahead then. Um, the amendment to the amendment passes. And now we move back to the amendment to the motion. Which. Was that we. As amended. Um, amend line fifty-two to say appreciate what we all have in common as humans. Including acknowledging diverse cultures, language, traditions, values, needs and lived experiences. So we're voting on that amendment to the original motion to adopt draft four. Please go ahead. It looks like we are four votes in favor and one nay. Um, I'm the, the no vote on that one. So that motion passes. And we'll incorporate that language on line fifty-two. Okay. We will, Jenny, you've got your hand up. Have you got another motion for us?
I do on line sixty-two, if I've got it correct on my draft. Oh, I don't. Sorry, I'm going to have to look at the draft.
I think as we've amended this, the, the lines.
Oh, yeah, that's.
So you're going to have to look back at the actual section or subsection of the rule.
Okay, let me look at my.
I think we're adding five or six to whatever line number you originally had.
It's, uh, or preferential, so I'm trying. It's, or preferential, so I'm trying to find where that is. Am I looking at the right one? A student, a student or educator should be, should, well, a student or educator should be discriminated against, receive adverse or preferential. I wanted to add preferential, but I'm not locating where that's, where the right spot for that.
Was that A, B, C or D? I assume it's in that section.
Oh, it's, it's seventy-one, line seventy-one. Sorry, that threw that off quite a bit for me.
determines the content of a.
So it should re, yeah, so line seventy, oh, no, that threw it off too.
You're down below, I think you're on seventy-seven, maybe.
Yes, that's it. A student or educator should be discriminated against. Okay, so I would like it to read discriminate against, comma, receive adverse or preferential treatment. So what I'm adding is. Is that, or receive preferential treatment. So in other words, we don't want them discriminated against, but at the same time, we don't, also don't want the discrimination be to the advantage of others. Of some versus others, we don't want that to happen to any, any group. So that's my recommendation there.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend then before the committee. The motion to amend is dealing with line seventy-seven, as it's shown on the screen, that is three D. So as amended, it would read, a student or educator should be discriminated against, receive adverse or receive preferential treatment. There probably should be a comma there because of the student or educator sex, race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, identity or membership in any other protected class. And would anyone like to speak to that motion? Jenny, would you like to speak to your motion, or, and we'll go to comment?
I, I feel like I already did, but I can, it's not necessarily always a negative thing that can be discriminatory, it could be in a positive element too, that could be discriminatory.
That's actually a question, I'll ask if we don't have other hands up.
Okay.
Maybe this is one of other committee members and staff, discrimination, I read that as preferential or negative treatment, means not being treated the same, I believe. But is that, that may not be the way other people are understanding that. And I haven't pulled up a dictionary definition of that, but while I'm looking for that, maybe Board Member Straight can talk to us for a minute.
I feel a little bit cautious commenting because it feels like a landmine. So when I see receive preferential treatment, in the context of equity. If a student has dyslexia in my classroom, one of the accommodations that I would be willing to make as a teacher, and especially if they have, well, anyway, would be that they receive an oral quiz instead of a written quiz, or to give them those options. I think about the recent controversy where many individuals have stated that their belief that the Jazz gave a scholarship to a certain group of individuals was preferential treatment, and they said that was racist. So I'm really struggling, and because I'm, I want to make certain that I, I don't say this wrong, because sometimes in the definition of, that I've given, I do give what you may define, or what someone may define as preferential treatment, but it's based on the situation as my, and my professionalism as a teacher. So I hope I said that right, and because it's important to me that, that in the terms of equity that we, we stick, stick to that, what that term means.
Okay, thank you. We've got AAG Quezenberry with his hand up, and then I'd like to ask if Leah Voorhees could help us as well, because she lives in this world, so she may be able to help us with that as well. Please, Brian.
Chair, I was just gonna add the definition that you were referencing. I pulled it up here on my phone, and it says discrimination is to make a distinction in favor of or against a person or thing on the basis of the group, class, so on and so on. So according to just the lay dictionary definition, it does appear to include both the, in favor of or against, as you had indicated.
Can I ask a question? Brent, is it necessary then to add that receive adverse treatment? Do you see what I'm saying? Because we're calling out one, and then to not call out the other, that's why I had put that in there, because there's, if we're just saying discriminate against could be either one, then we don't need the, or receive adverse treatment, because if we call that out, it almost feels like we need to call the other out too. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Okay, go ahead, Brent, and answer that, and then we're gonna go to Leah and get some more context, and then we'll come back.
I see what you're saying. I'm not sure what the antecedent was to that, receive adverse reference, if that comes from one of our founding documents or not, maybe Jeff might have some input on that, as far as where that comes from. But I see your point there. It is, it could be considered synonymous with discriminated against. So I think that's, that's more kind of a preference. A stylistic type of input there, unless Jeff can point to maybe a founding document from the board that might have that language in it.
Yeah, I, I could actually comment on that on the pedigree, and I believe that some of the language in this area was borrowed from a resolution that came from both the House and the Senate. So I think that's where it started, and there've been some modifications made to that. Let's hear from Leah real quick, and then we can come back to this.
Thank you, Chair. Leah Voorhees, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support. So when it comes to like legal protections that we are responsible for at the State Board of Education, what, what we are responsible for as far as compliance is concerned, is to ensure that, that the adverse treatment is not based on these protected classes. And so I, I too see your point, just like AAG Quezenberry just said, Board Member Earl, but as far as our role in the, in the, in the enforcement, if that's the right word, of compliance with the laws for which we are responsible, the, the adverse treatment is, is a particularly important thing that, that we are looking for when we're determining if, if an individual was discriminated against based on their protected class. And, and for my long experience in education, specific to students with disabilities, but, but any of those classes, if that's helpful to try and get at the, like, the genesis of why it's kind of in the negative form.
Okay, thank you, Leah. I see AAG Quezenberry, is your hand stuck up, or do you have another bit to add to the conversation? Okay, looks like it went down. AAG Beus though, has her hand up, please.
I do, I think that what, this is Michelle Beus, Assistant Attorney General. The thing that Leah is trying to express is that we can't illegally discriminate. We discriminate every single day on lots of legal basis. For example, we don't let everyone drive a car, it's not until they're age sixteen or fifteen that they can get their permit, and sixteen that they can get their driver's license. That's a form of discrimination, but it's not an illegal form of discrimination. But the types of discrimination that are listed in here, we have to be cautious of, because the courts have told us and our constitution tells us that it's illegal for us to adversely discriminate against individuals based on these protected classes.
Thank you, Michelle, I appreciate that. And I'll just add one other thought to this part of the conversation. I believe, and I certainly haven't had conversations with our legislators as to how their resolutions came about, but if we look at the document that was posted as part of staff's homework, I believe that it's in our, let me check and make sure that it's there. In our backup, there was some information, oh. Maybe it's not there, we do have it. There was a request made for what other states are doing in this area, and I think that this language that was adopted by our legislature and their resolution mirrors that of several other states. And I would believe there's probably been quite a bit of legal research that's been done on that language. I would hesitate to disturb it, just because in the interest of equity, we do positively, some could say we positively discriminate by giving kids supports based on, you know, what characteristics, their characteristics, and how they might need those supports. So.
Chair Hanson?
Yeah, please.
I would be happy to withdraw my motion with the, with the additional information that was received. It sounds like discriminated against actually takes in that preferential dialogue based on what is said. It looks like these are two different components, but very. So I would be happy to draw that with the further clarification that was provided.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Is there, the most, the maker of the motion is gonna withdraw that motion. I don't see anyone with hands up to speak against that, so we'll move on to the next area then. And Board Member Earl? You are the motion maker tonight.
I, I know, and thank you for humoring me. I appreciate the work that's been put into this already, and like I said, some of these were recommended but not incorporated in, and so I'd like the dialogue about them. Whether or not we use them, it helps for clarification, both for the public, I feel like, and also for, for ourselves too, to make sure our rule is clear. So I, and that's not line seventy-four anymore, but on, oh, it is, oh, it's not on my, line eighty is what it would be. I'm, I would ask that we move the four, five and six down, and, well, I guess they're just incorporated in, an additional one, it doesn't, either, it could be to seven at the bottom, to be honest with you. So on line eight, at the bottom of this section, an additional seven, and it would say. Let me find my language. No public education. Compel a teacher or student to adopt, affirm, adhere to or profess ideas in violation of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, or anti-discrimination laws of the state of Utah. And I think, yeah, that's the one right there. So, and if you wanna, you know, leave it up there for people to kind of digest that a little bit, and see if we can have some dialogue about that, I would appreciate it. So.
Okay, I think, Jenny, that it might be helpful if you could comment on Title VI, and what ideas might be in violation of, of that, just to help us.
Well, Title VI has to do with any kind of, I was gonna say discrimination, but it, it is that, once again, for anybody that receives federal funding, they can't discriminate against certain classes, and so that's where Title VI plays in, but also, it would also fall under any anti-discrimination laws. In this case, it would be compelling, making sure we have language in there that where a teacher or a student doesn't feel like they have to agree with something or adhere to something that they feel is in violation of those particular areas. Does that provide additional clarification?
That's helpful, thank you. Do we have any other committee members that would like to speak to this? Oh, we have Member Straight, please.
Oh, okay. So I'm gonna try and comment on this, having just seen it. Hopefully, I can navigate this in such a way that makes sense. So. We have a public education employee attempting to compel a teacher or student. To what? Board Member Earl, what are they being compelled to do? I'd like to reference the thing here, but specifically.
We'll allow some dialogue here. So the question is, what would the employee be compelling someone to do? Is that right, Brent?
Yeah, so it could be, it could be the idea of, and I'll throw some terms out there that we're seeing floating around, the idea of white fragility, compelling someone to feel a certain way, or, or affirm something. And in this case, something that encourages or results in racial type of discrimination, or falls under that category. So it could be that type of a thing, where someone is feeling compelled to either affirm or agree with something that they may feel uncomfortable about. The key thing here is the compelled part, making sure there's not a compelled element to speech or to thought, or feel compelled to be part of something that they feel is in violation of those discrimination rights or laws. I did that clarification for you, Brent?
So, thank you. So let me pose something here. So the principal comes to me and says, let me read from that. I need to affirm that one race is superior or inferior to another race, because I'm taking this from the, what the legislature said, that an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment because of the individual's race. So we've already stated, and I know it's coming down the line here, we've already stated that an individual cannot be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment because of an individual's race, and then there's a third item. And I think we've actually improved and clarified all of that even more so. And isn't it already against the law for a public employee to compel another to adopt racist ideas under this Title VI of the Civil Rights Act? Isn't that already the case?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
All of this is already, I just, all of this, the resolution, the, the, yes, and, and we're having to provide clarity, additional emphasis, because it, we're seeing violations of it. So yes, yes, you're, you're absolutely right. So, and, and I think almost this whole rule, we're, we're seeing a repetition of other areas, so.
Maybe I'm naive, or maybe I've been in a different place, but tomorrow will be my thirtieth year of education, and I have never seen or heard anything like unto this, only the idea that it's happening somewhere. I'm not against this, because it's already the law. I just think, you know, I think the verbiage here, I'm putting it in here, I, I just see potential abuse of that, but I, I don't know. It's hard for me to, to be too, I'm just throwing myself out here to the wolves, I guess, because, but I'm trying to respond honestly and fairly, and I just don't, and I'm not against what you say here, just like on the first one, I just don't see where it's going. So I'm gonna be quiet now for a little.
Okay, thanks, Brent. There are other committee members that want to comment on this? I would like to ask Jenny, what? I would like to ask Jenny, what? I guess I'm having a little bit of trouble seeing what this adds to what we have above. Because I believe we've already dealt with areas they can't be promoted, which means that they, I think that would fall into that compelling someone would be, you know, the same as promoting that. And I, I guess I hesitate to, to go any further with this one. I think we have it covered with the ones that are included above. Any?
I guess.
Onto that, that's a question.
Sure. And maybe I need to vet through this a little bit more, bring this up again next week to make sure it adequately fits precisely on the language. The concern is, is the compel element, either under trainings or under something where someone feels compelled to adhere to something or profess ideas that would go against those, those laws there. So if, if, if it, the, the committee would like further clarification for next week, I'd happy to provide that if they're not comfortable moving forward on this. So.
Okay, I've got one more hand up. Board Member Straight, we're back to you.
Yeah, here I go again. So I, I had a thought on this. And going back many years, I felt compelled and was compelled to have accommodations in, in 504 accommodations or IEPs. And initially, I would say that a great majority of teachers said, what is going on here? They sit in class and they get the same thing that everyone else does. Why do they need these accommodations? Why don't they just work harder? Guess what? I am completely opposite of that now. I see purpose and need behind the accommodations we give the students. And, you know, so did I feel compelled? Did I feel, yeah. Did I have questions? Did I have concerns? Yes. But sometimes it just has to happen. And, you know, it, it can go the other way as well. There, a, a teacher can take different positions on different things. For them to not take those positions, but to guide instruction, especially on controversial issues such as dropping the atomic bomb on, on Japan during World, at the end of World War II. Those are controversial subjects. So I, I guess that, that is an example of being compelled, but.
Is it in violation? That's, that's where it comes down to. The 504 accommodations, whether you felt compelled, but they were not in violation of, of law. So that, that would be the difference there. But we can, like I said, I'd be happy to withdraw now and provide further clarification for board members moving forward for next week.
Jenny, I just need you to come down on one side or the other there. If we want to go forward, we'll take a vote. If you want to withdraw, we'll withdraw the motion.
We can take it, we can take a vote. I can still bring it up next week as well.
Okay, certainly. Okay. Are we ready then to vote on this one? Brent, you've still got your.
Real quick, I, I guess what I needed to communicate, and I don't think I did a very good job of this, is that a public employee, an administrator or something, may go into a classroom and compel them not to talk against or for white fragility, which was the issue brought up by Board Member Earl. So I, 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 that's just a friendly thought on that, if we're going to look at this later.
Okay, let's go ahead. If there are no other comments, and we'll vote the motion before the committee is a motion to amend. Draft for lines 88 through 90, this is by adding a subsection seven, which would read, no public education employee shall compel a teacher or student to adopt, affirm, adhere to, or profess ideas in violation of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and anti-discrimination laws of the state of Utah. Board members, committee members, please vote. Laura, I didn't see your vote. Board Member Bellnet?
She's just re-entering.
Oh, okay. I know she had to transition over. We've got her on twice, it looks like, so. We'll hold for just a minute. See if we can get her vote. Okay, looks like that one is a no. So we have four in favor, or excuse me, four opposed and one in favor on that one. That motion will not pass. Are you okay with that one, Norley, as far as recording the votes?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move through and I'll continue to give Jenny the floor for the motions. If there's someone else that wants to speak, we'll let you have your chance as well. But go ahead, Jenny.
I, just as we get down in the next section, I have a couple of questions. And I don't necessarily have a, a motion, but I, I may, I just have some questions. Like, it's not line 84 anymore. It's, it's 92, it looks like. It says an LEA may, is this where Laura, is this where you wanted to remove the only? Is this the spot?
There. Okay, if I respond?
Yes, please do.
Okay, no, I'm going to keep the only on the line I had.
Okay.
Thank you. I read the value.
Okay, so where are we then, Jenny? If we can.
Okay, so the question is this, and maybe you can help me work through this. So we're saying an LEA may only provide curriculum and classroom instruction that includes concepts that are in 3.3. So what, when I go back up to the 3.3 section, that's all the stuff that they may not include.
Okay, so, yeah, let me, let me go over that just for a second. Jeff can, Jeff can help me with structure, but hopefully I can make this understandable. So if we go up to 3.3, it says that. Let's see, can you jump up to that, Jeff, to the, the section above? Let's see, yeah, here we go, sorry. So professionally may not include instruction that promotes or endorses these items. So they can't be promoted or endorsed, but we have, I guess, an, an issue where that, that doesn't mean these ideas are banned from the classroom. It means that they must be discussed in a manner that doesn't promote or endorse them if the LEA chooses to discuss those. And we have some other safeguards that say it needs to be an age-appropriate discussion that's down below. But they would also, if those concepts were to be included, that curriculum would need to be adopted in a public meeting and available for the public to, to view. So what, and, and the discussion that we've had, many of the comments that have come in is, how do we honor our, our First Amendment rights and, our excuse, yes, honor our First Amendment rights and honor the ability of teachers, especially in higher grades, to have discussions about things that are going on in society? So that our kids are prepared when they leave high school to deal with these, what we might term controversial issues. And we listed up some of them, but they need to be presented in a neutral manner and not promoted or endorsed. And there's a safeguard for that. I believe we have these checks in place where they would be in accordance with state and federal laws, aligned with Utah standards, age-appropriate. And then they would need to be, the curriculum would need to be vetted through a, a public meeting and posted. So does that help Jenny to understand that a little bit? We?
Perhaps. I don't, I don't, I, I think there's maybe some ambiguity to it, just a little bit on understanding. So that all those concepts are going to be taught, but they may not be promoted. It, am I?
May not be promoted or endorsed.
What does that mean? Because like in our, our sex ed, we say we can't advocate for certain things. But there's maybe an ambiguity on what advocate is. So I'm, and, and then I just have another question is, why did we not include? Are we just including the nots in that curriculum, or is that just go without saying? In other words, that the rest of the, the things contained in here. For example, fostering, what, where's our collaborating with diverse communities, that kind of, those, we're not going to, are we not referencing those to be, that could be included in curriculum? Are we just emphasizing the numbers?
So if.
Help me understand. I'm.
So we understand from public comment and from many sources that the ideas contained in 3.3 are controversial ideas. And so the language says they shouldn't be promoted or endorsed, so they shouldn't be only that side of a discussion sold. And again, we're talking, this needs to be age-appropriate. But if those ideas are introduced in a discussion, say in a high school sitting's class, they need to be presented in a manner as described down below. And you need to go through that vetting process. So be approved in an open and regular public meeting. You can see on line 98. And, and then also, I think it says posted on the website or made publicly available. So that we, we, as we tried to figure out how to balance this, thought that that gives parents the right to see what's going to be taught, to raise any concerns. And we do have methods for them to do that and, and provide transparency without canceling an idea or banning any certain idea.
So, and, and maybe I'm not, maybe being as clear. What we're saying on number one is an LA may only provide curriculum and classroom instruction that includes components listed in this area. I, I, I guess, and maybe this is where that only comes in here, is that this is the only curriculum can only fall under this area?
That's not the meaning.
Maybe I misunderstood.
May only provide it in accordance with the laws. So all the, the A, B, C down below. If they are going to provide it, it has to be per those qualifiers below.
All right.
That's the construction.
Okay, maybe that provides greater clarity.
Okay, let's, Jenny, while you're gathering your thoughts, we'll go to Board Member Straight, and then we'll continue the dialogue. Go ahead.
Yes, of, of all the issues in this, in this rule, this is the area that is, has been mentioned many times by fellow educators, the concerns. And they're not concerned with the, the language as it is now, because we already have that. We're not to promote or oppose certain ideas. For example, one of the things in a government class you'll, you'll cover is economic systems. Now, economic systems are different than political systems. Economic systems are simply capitalism, socialism, and communism. But within that, when you start looking at the different philosophers such as Adam Smith and Karl Marx, you are not to oppose or promote those ideas because they would be controversial. But students need to be exposed at the proper age, in the proper circumstance. And we do the same thing in US history with John Locke and Thomas Hobbes in regards to how government works. And not to get into that too much, but I'm, I'm quoting from the United States History II, which is 11th grade, from Our Core. "Social studies and history classrooms are the ideal venues to nurture civic virtue, consider current issues, learn how to act civilly toward others, build the civic identity, and nurture global awareness." Now, those, those are noble goals. That is what the purpose of our education is. We can, we can provide economically and we can be good citizens. And so this area concerns me. I really like what's been done. I like the verbiage. This has been worked, this area's been worked a lot. And, you know, I, I feel comfortable with it more now than I did when we, when we began. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
Hey, thank you, Board Member Straight. Do we have others who want to comment? Hey, we're back to you, Jenny. Please go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm glad that Board Member Straight was able to thoroughly work through this. I'm working through this now. Like I said, some of this did not, you know. Anyways, I'm just trying to understand the wording and everything, if that's okay. So I appreciate your patience with me helping to get the clarification. I think it's important for public to, to get clarification on this as well. That's, I, that was, I just, I feel like it's still a little ambiguous to me, but I understand what the intent is. And maybe, I don't know, I, I do have one more motion at the end, though. I don't know if anybody else has any other comments in this section.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up, Jenny, so you have the floor for a motion.
Okay, can I ask one more clarifying question on night, on, well, mine says 94. It's, it's on B of two.
Two B? That's a 90, 100 now?
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious on the phrasing, as applicable, contain content in accordance with professional learning guidelines. I just wondered if someone could provide some clarification on why the addition of as applicable there.
And I think I might call on Mr. Van Holton to help us there, if you would, please.
Absolutely. This was actually feedback we received from several LEAs as the section reads. And the LEA, if you have curriculum, this is in reference to the, the list above that you were talking about before, like all the positive things. So we're referencing positive things as well as the things that should not be promoted or endorsed. And saying you can have curriculum that contains those things, but as applicable. And the reason why we added as applicable is some of the statements in the positive section are things like identify underperforming students. You would not have a classroom activity where students help identify the underperforming students amongst them. That would be something that's just for the teacher. So we wanted to make sure that the components that make sense get brought in, but the ones that don't, do not. So we put in as applicable to clarify.
Okay, thank you. That adds clarity to that for me. I was wondering why.
Sorry, Jenny, didn't mean to speak over you. I, I've got a little bit of a lag here. I might just add a comment. This rule was particularly challenging because we don't have a core standard for equity. Equity is spread amongst all different classes. There's no class in equity in our, in our classroom. So this isn't like a core standard. This is looking at all the content that's there. And then if certain of these components or these concepts are to be taught, then they need to be taught in accordance with these rules. And so I believe the transparency aspect of it gives the public, the parents, a chance to hold teachers and LEAs accountable, to see these are presented in the right fashion. But the rule is also structured so that we don't restrict teachers from getting into current events as is age-appropriate with kids and, and talking to them about things in a, a neutral manner so that they can be exposed to these ideas without being, the word indoctrinated has been thrown out or without being sold on these things. So we're trying to strike that balance. And it's not easy. This is a, a little, it's been a little bit of a messy process because this isn't just like a core standard. It's, we're trying to cover a lot of areas.
And I would agree with that. I would agree with that. I, like I said, I, I appreciate the clarification. I have a last motion, but maybe this solves, I don't know. It, it was to simplify. And it, you can tell me where this works, okay? Because I, I guess this language here, back on the four section was messy to me, but I think, I, I don't know. Let me, let me provide my language and maybe it will. So under the very last section, and it, it would probably be a C. My line's 108, but that's not what this would be on your thing. It would, it would be motion six, Jeff, if you've got that. So for C.
We're on 328.5 then? Okay, I see. Yes.
Yeah, so one, yeah, line 115, if we could add it there as a C. And it, so the C and D element there. And I'll read that off just so we can hear that. And I, I just put in there, nothing in this statute prohibits teachers or students from discussing public policy issues of the day or ideas that individuals may find unwelcome, disagreeable, or offensive. And then D would say, in accordance with these provisions, no public education. And then D would say, in accordance with these provisions, no public education employee shall compel. A teacher or student to discuss public policy issues of the day without their consent, in other words, it's. It's that compel issue again, that it's, you know, just because things are. Messy, they can still be talked about. But then, and maybe there, maybe it better fits up above, I'm not sure, I felt like this was a broad thing. In accordance with these provisions, yeah, that. That they still have that option, they shouldn't be compelled to engage in something that they don't want to engage into. And that's emotion, if there's thoughts on that, I would appreciate some feedback.
Do we have any comments or questions for? Regarding that motion? I might ask one Jenny, what does, what does C? What does that add to? What we already have above? Is it, what, what are we trying to add?
I guess I was answering the question that. Community members were asking, that idea of banning or or not allowing speech to take place, because that is not the case, right? As been discussed by Board Member Straight, that we, we don't want to prohibit the ability or. You know, to engage in dialogue about current policies or current public issues, or even past public issues, I guess, as far as that goes. And so that's the, that's the reason, this is my answer to that question, that was posed by so many people. And I guess in the rule, the, the answer there, that's why I'm maybe seeking some clarity on that. Or I sought some clarity on it was because of the way number four was worded, it just was unclear as to. What the intent was there, at least in my mind, and so I wanted to address those issues. Did I just talk in a complete circle for you, that was.
It's, it's okay, I'm not dizzy.
Does that make sense what I'm saying, I was answering the question that I think we were all trying to answer, but I. I put it in a different location, different wording than was addressed earlier in this, this, this rule.
Okay, I'm just looking above at A, and I'm wondering what C adds to A. Yes, that's my specific question, and then when we're done, I think Laura, I do see her hand up now. So we'll go to her.
I think it adds that idea of. Just the idea that, and maybe the clarification on the unwelcome or disagreeable, that we all don't have to agree on. On items, and it, it, I think it does push that idea of, of First Amendment dialogue. And that's what I think it adds. But we could easily, I could be persuaded. So. If it needed to go somewhere else or wording, make sure that we've got. You know. The wording, or maybe, maybe you could persuade me that the wording is adequate the way it is, so I'm open to.
Let's, um, let's see what Member Bellnap has to say, and then we'll, we'll continue, go ahead Laura.
Thank you Chair Hanson, I actually would like to see the whole amendment, that would be helpful to see it all. On C, thank you Jeff, maybe you can't fit it all on here, but second, I've gotten some help from up above. And the question is, we have in here that prohibits discussing public policy issues of the day. But what about the past?
Yeah, I, I think you're accurate in saying that, it could just be public policy issues in general, or it could even be. That wording could be changed to controversial issues, that's, that seems to be. A common term I'm hearing in civics education as well as other areas. So I'm.
I'm still coming back, I, I tend to agree with the comment you made, what does C add? Or add or take away from what is already in there, I need a little clarification there Chair.
Okay, thank you Laura, did everyone hear that, she's a little bit far away on mine. Um, so the same question, I guess, was back to. How does C add to A, and I think we've got Board Member Straight now?
Well, this may be helpful, I'm going to refer back to the, the purpose statement behind U S History Two. And this, I think, addresses what's been talked about. Effort should be made to help students make connections between the events and ideas of the past and their lives today. Contextualizing the study of modern America by helping students make connections across the span of U S history. Can enrich and deepen their understanding of their own place in the American story. Does that address the idea or concept that we're trying to get across as far as connecting the past and the present?
I appreciate that context as well, I'm wondering, just looking at this, if. I'm looking at Jenny's C and I'm looking at A, and if we just. Idea is very broad and. Would include controversial ideas and they wouldn't necessarily have to be defined. Because if we say controversial ideas, we're gonna have to come up with a definition for controversial ideas, and I think that's. I actually looked into that because we've, and that, that's a difficult thing to do. But if we, event might not be included in A. So if we were to say prohibit or ban any event or. Or ban any discussion of any event or any idea including these ideas. That would allow latitude to talk about past events, current events, all of those. And then we have some language about. Oh, this general sharing and, and I think this marketplace of ideas, I don't know what the pedigree is for that, but I believe that that's. And we're talking about competing ideas in these classes. And then the kids have to decide, you know, what should come out on top, or which, which ideas they think are winners. So that's the back and forth discussion that I envisioned, but with that, could we just? Supplement A a little bit to cover what you're trying to cover down here Jenny, without having to define controversial issues?
That would be fine, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I. I wasn't completely following every aspect of what, what did you want to include there, if you don't mind repeating that? Or how did you want to make that adjustment, I don't mind.
Yeah, I, I'll ask Jeff to help Wordsmith maybe, but prohibit or ban. Let's see, prohibit or ban discussion of any event. Or idea, including those described in this rule. So it'd be discussion of any.
What about attitudes, beliefs and concepts? I, I remember learning about that in college.
Are those ideas? Or no?
Attitudes, beliefs and concepts. I remember that being a definition of, of philosophy when I was in college. I just remember that, I don't know if that, I think that covers a very broad range of, of things that could be talked about.
Okay, we're, we're doing a group edit, and I think that's okay for this section, any thoughts on that, how would that read Brent?
Yeah, for, for the group edit, can, could we make the one we're editing larger, I'm having a hard time reading it. Oh, thank you very much, that helps.
So that was attitude. Something and concept, attitude, belief or concept, including those described in this rule. How does that look, Laura, you've got your hand up?
Yes Chair, I'll try and speak into my speaker a little better, do we need the word any?
So you'd say events, ideas, attitudes, that's how you change it?
Yes, please.
So all of those get. The plural.
That's correct.
Could we take out events? Ideas, just go with attitudes, beliefs or concepts?
Well, what about events though Brent, what about?
I, I, I think all those are. Those are contained within those, those, those three terms. I think those are inclusive of everything we could possibly hit.
I like, I like to include events, I feel like e- events, well, when I say events, I think of current events. And. I think that might be a necessity for a teacher to be able to include that.
So Janet, how are you feeling about what's written on the board right now?
No part of this rule shall be construed. By an LEA or educator to prohibit or ban discussion of events, ideas, attitude, beliefs or concepts. Including those described in this rule, but. What other things would we be referring to by including those described in this rule, because we've given a list above? Are there other things in the rule we're referring back to there? Aren't, that aren't covered in events, ideas, attitudes, beliefs or concepts?
No, I think, at least my response to that would be that just emphasizes the fact that this rule is about this subject, and so those are included. But, yeah.
Okay, that, that kind of seems like unnecessary verbiage to me, from the general sharing and participation in the marketplace of ideas. No, I think, I think it sounds good.
Okay, any other comment, are we ready to? Have someone make this as a motion Jenny, would you?
Oh, that's, yeah, I was just gonna say, we just doing that, that. And part right there.
So this would drop C then, is that right? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on this, and then we'll, we'll deal with D separately, so we'll. Without objection, we'll divide the motion. So the motion. Before the committee is to amend draft four, as shown on the board with line one ten reading. Prohibit or ban discussion of events, discussions of events, ideas, attitudes, beliefs or concepts. Including those describing this rule, from the general sharing and participating. Participation in the marketplace of ideas fostered in a learning environment. And. Any discussion to that motion? We'll go ahead and vote. And. It's all coming up green, so we're unanimous on that one, that motion passes. And. I think we're, got the remaining D, which would now be C to deal with.
Yeah, and can I just speak to this real quick, and we can adjust whatever we need to, it doesn't need to be. Discuss public policy issues of the day, but it does need, I think there needs to be an element of protection if, if a. If there is a, some element that someone want, doesn't want to engage in. So that they're not compelled, I just feel like that needs to be a, a piece that's built in here somewhere.
Yeah, can we, Jeff, can you just space that down a few so that we can see the whole thing? I know it's split between two pages, so just for purposes of discussion, can you throw a couple of spaces in and get it all in one, there we go. Thank you. So the concern here, if I understand it, is that. Someone who is above a teacher or a student. So an administrator or someone further up the, the line would be. Compelling or forcing a teacher to discuss. Current events without their consent.
Or a, and specifically here, looking at trainings and things. If there's something they don't want to participate in. There's just an element of that. So. And specifically, I'm thinking of maybe students, whether that's a, an assignment or something, instead of. Where they feel compelled to have to do something in place of. You know, asking for an alternative assignment or something, if it's something they don't want to engage in.
Okay, any comments, Laura, you've got your hand up. There, please.
Yeah Jenny, yes, I do, I really appreciate this concept. However, I think this is really, would be better done at a local issue. Where a teacher could talk to their principal more closely, rather than us overarching this. To every LEA and teacher in the state.
Okay, any other comments on this one? I, so Brent, please.
Just briefly, I'll say that I support what Board Member Bellnap suggested.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just. Have to speak, I think. As written, this is really broad, and I think that we, we do give kids assignments. And teachers are in some ways compelled to teach per curriculum, which might include what some would determine to be. Public policy. Issues, so I'm, I'm not sure that. If we wade into this, I think there might be some real unintended consequences. Not their specific concerns, there may be a way to address those, we, we have addressed some of those in the rule. Above, now, it's the ways things need to be discussed and. And that sort of thing, but I, I don't think I can be in favor of this amendment. Is there any other discussion? The amendment? Okay. The motion before the committee then is that we amend draft four. That's lines, I don't know what lines we're really on, but this is one C. Which reads, as amended would read, in accordance with these provisions. No public education employee shall compel a teacher or student to discuss public policy issues of the day without their consent. We'll go ahead then and, and vote. Okay, it looks like we have Board Member Earl in favor. And. Four votes then opposed, so that one won't pass. So are there any other motions before we get to the initial motion on this Jenny?
And I apologize, we're gonna have to go back, I, I have a question on collective responsibility, it says establishing learning communities. Committed to continuous improvement. This is, this.
Get us to a line here, so we can.
It's C, I know, it's.
That's okay, Jess goes backwards as well as it goes.
I know, he's awesome, isn't he? And he probably hasn't memorized where it's at really, anyways, without the line. Continuous improvement, individual and collective responsibility and identifying under, underperforming students in need of supports. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what. What this idea of collective responsibility really is, because if individually responsibility plays out. What, what is this role of collective responsibility, I don't know if someone can answer that?
Okay, I'm gonna, well, we've got Brent with his hand up, and then I'll ask Jeff to maybe summarize some of the discussion there. As well, if you would please, Jeff after Brent, go ahead Brent.
Thank you Chair. So, I'm not certain how many people are aware of the term PLC. PLC stands for professional learning communities. So for example. I teach U S history, they're in a large high school, others teach U S history. But it doesn't necessarily have to be just U S history teachers. It could be any teacher, working with another teacher, for example. One of the things is, is student self-efficacy, that's one of the, the key things that I was studying four years ago is. How to build self-efficacy in students, and I, I got with another teacher and we bounced ideas off of this. And. We started adopting some of the same teaching strategies based on the same philosophy of Bandura. In regards to our, our, our teaching. And by collaborating. Collectively. We were able to improve student learning. And so a professional learning community, which may or may not be the same teachers of the same subject. But could be all, many different combinations, is an example of collective responsibility. And that is one of the things we've been asked to do as teachers, is to work with each other. And that is one of the things that we've been asked to do as teachers, is to work with each other, that, and, and this is a difficult concept, because many people in it, uh, they're in competition with other people at their work. And sometimes that even happens in schools, where people become competitive, and my success is your failure. But how it works best is when teachers work together for the collective good of all the children in the school. And maybe some people see that word of collective as a word or a buzzword for communism. I can tell you it's not.
Thank you, Brent. Jeff, just from the conversations that you've had and the input, is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, just in terms of pedigree of where the language came from, this was taken from the Professional Learning Standards Toolkit that the board has approved. Uh, but I think Board Member Straight has pretty much said the same thing, and, and much better than I would. So that's where this language came from.
Thank you. I, when I read collective responsibility, I read that as teamwork. So I, I see, you know, the individuals responsible certainly for their performance, but then there is a teamwork that occurs within a class or within individual learning groups, where you have kids grouped together or teachers grouped together. So I, I read community and, and collective and teamwork kind of as, those meaning teamwork. Does that help Jenny?
That provides greater clarity. I'm wondering if we actually, you're saying this actual wording came from Jeff? This actually came from the standards? Is that what you're saying?
Professional learning, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because I, I wondered if we could incorporate just teamwork in or something, something that suggests that element to it. So.
Okay.
And I, uh, thank you, Brent, for providing that additional dialogue. I appreciate it. So.
Okay, committee, um, I'm seeing Jenny, your hand is, is up.
Could we, yeah, I, okay, I'm just still pondering that, but maybe if that were to differ, but I, that's one I can do for next week, so I'm good.
Okay, appreciate that. Anything else from committee members? Anything that needs to be heard or any further motions? If not, we are back to the original motion. And I believe, maybe we can flash that up on the screen for me so that I get it right. Have we got that, Jeff? I can try to re-remember it, but if you have it on the screen, that'll help me.
Chair, I believe the original motion was to just pass draft four, and it will now need to be passed draft four as amended.
Okay. So the, uh, here we go. Now, the motion then before the committee is that the committee approves our 277-328 draft four, as amended, on first reading and forward to the board for approval on second and final reading. And we'll go ahead and, and vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Laura, you have a hand up? That need to be discussed before the vote?
No, I'll say it after, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I think I saw five green checkmarks. Is that, anyone opposed, please speak now, or forever hold your peace. We're gonna move this one forward then to the board. Okay. Was there anything, Nora Lee, that we need to clear up as far as votes, or anything that you need for your records?
We are good to go, Chair.
All right, appreciate all your hard work in the background. Keep a track of our, sometimes a little bit confusing discussion, but I hope we stuck mostly with Robert's rules tonight. We'll go then to Laura, and then it looks like Jenny has something. Go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, Chair Hanson, I don't want to belabor the night, but I really appreciate that our committee member Jenny worked so diligently, and that I think the amendments that were passed tonight make this draft better. So I really have wanted to say that publicly. I appreciate her hard work.
No, thank you very much. Jenny?
Thank you, that was kind. Um, I actually wanted to just to thank the public and everyone. This is one of those rules. We've been working on this. We did, this wasn't a quick thing, because the legislature passed a resolution last week. In case the public didn't know that, we've been working on this since easily January, trying to gather data, gathering information, and being thorough and intentful, making sure that we're going in a direction that is best for our students and educators. And so there's been a lot of thoughtful approach. This hasn't been something we've taken lightly. I, those are just my comments. I just wanted to thank our staff especially. I think they've been many, many of texts, right, back and forth late at night, just trying to ask questions about things and making sure we're, we're thorough. The other thing is, and as I was going back through a number of rules and laws, there were a couple of things that stood out to me. One of those was that so many of these things that were being asked, we already have coming before us, like right now, our special education, we are thoroughly vetting through that as far as what is the most, how do we help others be more inclusive? And so this rule is, is very slim compared to the work that goes on every day in our schools and by our staff. And I just want the public to know that they've got to look beyond sometimes the other things are that we have going on. So that's, that's just my thoughts. I appreciate all the hard work, and thank you.
But thank you, Jenny. Other committee members, Janet, please?
Well, I, I would like to add my voice to those who have expressed appreciation for the work of our staff, for the work of our committee chair, who I think has put a lot of extra time and effort into trying to bring together ideas and getting to a consensus on some of these things that are very complex and, and very difficult, but yet reach into all aspects of public education. And I think it's being done with an eye to doing something good that will be helpful to all children who are involved in the public education of our state. So I express, express my appreciation for that. It was a great discussion to know some things, like first staff had pulled definitions and verbiage for the rule from other standing documents that ha, I think Laura Bellnap and I were in on the production of Portrait of a Graduate a few years ago, and remember doing a lot of wordsmithing and, and having angst over what went into that document. And I'm thrilled that it's now a founding document that we can relate to back for some of these things that we need to carry on further in terms of equity for kids in schools. So I thank our chair, I thank the committee, I thank the staff.
Thank you very much, Janet. Brent, have you got your hand up now for a comment? Just thumbs up?
As if I haven't said enough, I just can't help myself. You know, last year during the summer, when I was first introduced to Portrait of a Graduate, when I started with Board Member Earl during that summertime on assessment, and, uh, under a different capacity, not the board, it was referred to as aspirational. I think we've moved past that. And I'm not making a motion or anything. I'm just saying I think we need to maybe visit that and bump it up the line, that it's no longer an aspirational document, that it is, as was mentioned earlier, a founding document. I really appreciate the work of everyone on the, on the committee. I know all of us have spent many hours, and I know that Chair Hanson has spent more than any of us. And I, I appreciate that service.
Well, I appreciate the kind words, but what's really been encouraging for me is to talk with a lot of folks who had a lot of different viewpoints on what we're talking about now in this area. But I think the common denominator is, everyone is concerned about their kids' education and making sure that we do a good job of preparing our, our students and really helping them to achieve the aspirational goals of Portrait of a Graduate and making that a reality. So it's been just excellent to have all this input. And as I said, I hope that we can keep that ball rolling and have people remain passionate about education in Utah and involved at all levels. The more adults we can have involved in helping our kids, I think the better off we all are. So thank you to everyone. I know staff, especially, there've been some late nights. Appreciate all the work that they've done. I think that we have a good product now to pass on to the board. I'm sure there'll be more robust discussion as we move forward. But I'm really confident that we've been able to strike a, a good balance in some areas that have been really tough to, uh, to figure out where that right balance, where that correct balance is. So thank you, everyone, and we are maybe forty-five, fifty minutes earlier than I thought we might be tonight. So good job to everyone. Appreciate your help. Have a good night.